I think it's lighting. We gonna get ready to get started on time, man, or?
Yeah, we're gonna skip the.
I'm gonna get us started, everybody's ready.
Yep.
Seven. Okay, start the meeting, everybody rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, call to order, this I'm missing, well Marcus is the only one not on there. Gentlemen, again, Tony's here in person, if you've got a question or concerns, something like that, if you raise your hand, I'll get to you as fast as I can. So we'll go ahead and get started with old business, need approval minutes, the regular meeting minutes of September 3rd, 2020 are attached. I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of September 3rd, 2020 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion?
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby? Mr. Kirby?
He's getting a thumbs up.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. McNeil?
Yes.
Mr. Braggart?
Yes.
Alright, motion passes, audience participation, don't think there's anyone here, it's all staff, move on to presentations. Item for council consideration, League of Kansas Municipalities Voting Delegates, the League's annual conference will be held virtually October 13th through 16th. City may elect up to three voting delegates, city administrator Vandal is slated to attend the conference. Governing body will designate up to three voting delegates for the League of Kansas Municipal Annual Conference. Is there anybody that wants to attend besides, you know, besides Tim? I won't be able to. Well, yeah, it goes on, it goes, you don't have to.
There's different seminars and workshops.
Yeah, you choose the ones you really want to go to, something like that, just not doing it in person. We don't have, we don't have to have three, we can have one or two or whatever. So is any, do I see anybody else wanting to do this? I don't see any hands up. Alrighty, then need to get a motion for Tim to be our, our, isn't he for City Lansing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion?
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. McNeil?
Yes.
Mr. Braggart?
Yes.
Alright, thank you, motion passes, thanks, Tim. Item number three is Lansing Tree Board Appointment, two vacancies exist on the tree board. Positions were advertised and one application has been received. Need a motion to appoint George Stephenson Stevenson to the Lansing Tree Board for a term ending on December 31st, 2021.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion?
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. McNeil?
Yes.
Mr. Braggart?
Yes.
Alright, motion passes, item number four, ordinance number 1048, issuance of general obligation funding bonds. Series 2020 dash A, this ordinance authorizing issue of 2020 A general obligation bonds. Need a motion to approve it to, I don't know, need a motion to approve and adopt ordinance number 1048.
I'm moved.
Second.
We can have a discussion on it now, if you've got any questions before we vote. Okay.
Mr. Trinkle? Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. McNeil?
Yes.
Mr. Braggart?
Yes.
Tim and you, we're trying to come to Little Lake, let me get going. Item number five, resolution number B52020, sales and delivery of general obligation refunding bonds, series 2020A. This resolution directs the sale and delivery of a 2020 A general obligation refunding bonds. Need a motion approved and adopt resolution number B52020. Before you do that, we can have any discussion that you may wish.
And Beth and I can kind of talk about this one a little bit.
Yeah, go ahead.
So the bond sale was today and had really favorable bids for both the temp notes as well as the refinancing. Based on the interest rate for the refinancing, we're looking at savings of $126,993 over the life of that debt. So we feel really good about that, we also got a fantastic interest rate on the temp notes as well. So, I know, I believe Clayton Kelly with Piper Sandler and Kevin Wimpy from Gilmore and Bell are on the Zoom call as well. So if the council has any questions for Clayton or Kevin, they could ask those questions, but, but we feel really good about today. We were, we were ecstatic when this came in, yeah, absolutely.
Council, any questions on that? I think we got one better rate than we were projecting.
What, what is the rate?
On the temp notes, it was point 361 percent. And on the refi, it was point 451 percent for a savings of $126,993.
Can you, can you go a little bit into what's being refinanced?
Yes.
I'd be glad to, I'm Clayton, Clayton's here with Piper Sandler, I'd be glad to discuss that as well if you, if you'd like.
Yeah, I'll let you go first, Clayton.
Okay, so, so just overall, what we were looking at, I think previously, what the city, what we told the city was around 75,000, was around our expectations for savings. This includes the 2010 bonds, 2010 A bonds, and then the 2012 B bonds. In aggregate, those are about $4.3 million. So that, that savings that we received today was 127,000 on that $4.3 million outstanding bond, so. Just a little bit more detail about the sale results, I'd say the last two weeks, from what I've seen in some of our sales, it's been some of the most impressive sales that I've seen before, just to put it into perspective, the city received eight bids on the refunding bonds and seven bids on the temp notes. Five, or excuse me, six of those eight bids on, on the refunding bonds was all under point 5 percent. So it's just, right now, the market, it, banks are really wanting municipal bond paper and just a really great result for the city and definitely the lowest GO bond refunding rate I've seen. So, I guess, that, that was the refunding and then on the taxable temp note, with those seven bids, we, we had probably five or six of them that were, that were below what we were expecting to receive, so. Just wanted to reiterate, a great result for the city and what, does that answer your questions? I know you were asking about what bonds were, were refunded, but the 2010 A bonds and the 2012 B bonds, that city had outstanding, that's, that's ended up being what was refunded.
And I can, I can piggyback onto that a little bit, if you're looking for more specifics, Gene, in 2010, that original bond was for West Mary Street Sewer Benefit District, a project on 147th Street. And then 2012 A and B, that was partially some town center expenses as well as a KDOT revolving loan fund and a KDHE revolving loan fund. So I mean, the, the things that we refied were, were quite old issuance.
Any other questions, gentlemen? We don't have any, and I'd like to get a motion to approve and adopt resolution B52020.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion, go ahead, Sarah.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. McNeil?
Yes.
Mr. Braggart?
Yes.
Just notice still, I failed to mention with everything around it, Johnson, Johnson, because none available either. Item number six, resolution number B62020, issuing sale and delivery of taxable general obligation bond temporary note series 2020 dash one. This resolution directs the issuing sale and delivery of a 2021 taxable general obligation temporary notes. I need a motion to approve resolution number B620, we have a discussion before we react on it, if there is any questions, or any comments. If not, I'd like to get that motion to approve and adopt resolution number B62020.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Sarah?
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. McNeil?
Yes.
Mr. Braggart?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Item number seven, resolution number B72020, Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan is updated every five years as a joint effort of the municipalities within Love, Wind, Dot and Johnson Counties. In addition to provide consistent hazard mitigation guidance for cities in the region, the adoption of this plan is part of the community rating system in coordination with the National Flood Insurance Program. Participation in the CRS assists residents by providing discounts on federally mandated flood insurance for those homes in the flood plain. Need a motion to approve and adopt resolution number B72020.
I'm moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion second, discussion on this.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. McNeil?
Yes.
Mr. Braggart?
Yes.
Alright, item passes. Item number eight, Drain and Basin IG98 Senatorial Sewer Interceptor Extension Plan. Staff fills a need, staff fills the next logical location for future growth to occur in Lansing and southward adjacent to K7. The 2014 Senatorial Sewer Master Plan has identified a large gravity sewer running south along the west side of K7 to service ultimate growth in three sub-basins totaling nearly 1,500 acres. Staff requested a scope and fee from George Butler Associates to examine these options. The results of the study will, the results of the study will provide staff and the governing body the information needed to make fiscal responsible decisions as development occurs. Funds for this project are available in a utility engineering service account. Need a motion to approve the scope and fee for the 98 Drain Basin Sewer Study and amount not to exceed 43,244. And, and Tony Zell is here also, do you have any questions?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Tony, you want to go into it a little bit?
I'm, I'm ready to answer any questions you might have, I think Tim and I looked at this and in consultation with, you know, other staff and trying to figure out the next logical place for growth, we felt this was appropriate, but want to make sure we can make the best decisions with our money going forward and provide the council with every option available to, you know, provide the resources necessary to further growth, so.
Sarah, we didn't include the other growth area we identified in the comprehensive plan, which was to the west? Or is that a separate, I mean, if we're going to look at future growth and what that might cost to put sewers in, it makes sense to me that we look at, I think there's a west growth area and south.
Correct.
Is there any way we could look at getting them both done or no? I mean, adding them to the master plan?
Yeah, I, I think, I think it would be appropriate to.
I hate to put this one in, and then somebody buys a property out there and says, hey, we want to develop this, and then we're like, okay.
Right, just, just so we're all clear, this, this is just to kind of lay out all of our options so we know what we can do should the need arise. And we kind of felt that this was the, the hot button place that we were looking for, you know, for growth. But we can certainly go back and, you know, talk with, you know, the consultants and, and see what that would take to look at another piece.
I think, I think Tony has a point, this, this right here is really going down towards McIntyre, for everybody goes, is that correct?
Yes.
South, and, but yet, we've got a lot of, of growth over by the high school, and now, I think we're Tony's, if I'm wrong, correct me Tony, I think that's what Tony's alluding to.
So I think why this one kind of bubbled up, we've, nothing's obviously imminent, but there were people kicking the tires a little bit further south, and that's why this one kind of bubbled to the top. We could certainly look at doing one to the west also, because I, I know that's something that the governing body spoke to Tony and I about a few years ago, was trying to be proactive with how we design our sewers. So, so I think we could certainly do an additional study.
Right, I'd be more than happy to go back and talk with GBA and take a look at that.
Well, I mean, I'm thinking if, if we are looking out that way and have options, we'll have options to put it in the park as well or anywhere somewhere.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, everybody's been pushing to get the park going too.
Well, 125 acres out there just to the east of the park, was annexed into the city, so eventually, somebody's gonna, I would think, take over that and develop residential.
Well, I would recommend we get this kicked off and we'll, you know, trudge forward and we'll certainly talk with the consultants and staff can work together and we'll come back with something, you know, as funds become available, I think we're trying to, you know, eat this elephant one little bite at a time, so.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? Don't see any, did I already read the motions, Sarah?
Yes.
Okay, we got a second on it?
Yes, we do.
Okay, go ahead.
Alright, Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. McNeil?
Yeah.
Mr. Braggart?
Yes.
Very good, thank you, Tony.
Thanks.
Go to staff report, city attorney. Greg on there, Greg. Okay.
Mayor, nothing to report.
Okay, there you are, okay, thank you, Matt, I see you, you got anything to report? Can't hear you, Matt.
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Thank you. Hey, Tim?
Oh, I know Tony Zell was going to go over a couple other things with you guys.
Sure, while I was here tonight, I thought I'd brief everyone on the status of the other projects that have been ongoing and upcoming. Northwest Sewer Project wrapping up nicely, we're finishing up seating and sodding, sod will be going down over off of Pebble Beach and Marion next Tuesday. The contractor was out replacing curbs and doing some grading and stuff this week, but with the nice weather, they've been, they've been extremely busy. And so are the subcontractors, so it's kind of hard to get, you know, enough staff to get the job done, but needless to say, we're, we're hound dogging pretty good. Award One project, we currently have two properties that have agreed to easements, a third one is ongoing, but we're continuing discussions. Hopeful that we'll have some resolution of that by the end of the month. The final thing I wanted to share with everyone tonight is a couple of tables and exhibits, GBA and I have been working on kind of a preliminary update to our 2020, or excuse me, to our 2014 master plan, now that we've done all these projects. It was nice to kind of take a look and see what, what the fruits of your labor were. We've spent just north of $10 million in the last six years, and I think you'll be pleasantly surprised with, with the work that's been done, the money that's been spent. But if Matt can show, show that first table, I know we've talked sewers ad nauseam over the years and it was kind of a bleak picture several years ago, but if everyone can see that, that's what we started with in 2014. All those red lines are sewer lines that were overloaded for even a one-year storm return.
Yep. Remember well.
Yeah, the, the orange and the, and the yellow represent 10-year and, and 50-year overloads, and you can see there's quite a bit of blood on the paper. But again, we've completed the Seven Mile Action Plan, the Nine Mile Action Plan, the Northwest Sewer, the Eisenhower Improvements, as well as the, the Small Ward One project, so kind of that was six years ago. Again, this was based on flow studies and hydraulic modeling that GBA did for us, and it painted a pretty bleak picture. But I'm happy to report tonight, if you look at the, the latest results that we got today, you'll see quite a bit of a change. Yep. So that's what's left.
Yes.
So we still have a little bit of work to do, but those lines that, that remain are considerably less taxed than they were in 2014, so we're very pleased about that. I just, I wanted to show that to everyone tonight and, and congratulate y'all on the decisions that had to get made to, to get us where we are today, but I think in six years, we've come a long way, so Tim and I wanted to put that out for everyone to take a look at, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Anybody have any questions? Well, Tony, I, I just tell you right off the bat, I appreciate you, what you guys did, it's been amazing having that, because I remember when those results came in, I nearly fell on my chair. But a lot of good decisions made by the governing body and staff, and I'm very pleased with the progress.
Can we show that chart that showed all of the different projects that were done?
Sure. Well, you have one other chart that was from the master plan and kind of laid out kind of the roadmap for us, and you can see the, the relief sewer, relief sewers for existing system. We've knocked out most of them, and we're under budget from what we originally thought. You know, a couple of projects have kind of morphed a little bit from the, you know, inception, but I think that just, those things kind of happen. But I'm glad to see that there's, you know, five of the stamps over there that say completed, another one in progress. So we've got a couple more to go, but we'll do those as development needs arise, as money becomes available, so. It's been a long road, but we got there.
Yeah, I thought this was.
This is excellent, this is excellent, any questions from governing body? Seeing a hand. Okay, thank you, Tony.
You bet, thanks.
Tim, anything else?
So the school board had contacted us about doing a joint meeting at 6:00 PM on October 12th. I did communicate with Superintendent Wessel a little bit if they were envisioning an indoor meeting or a Zoom meeting, and he had stated that the school board would prefer a face-to-face meeting at their building. So October 12th, 6:00 PM, in person. The superintendent did feel like we could effectively socially distance when we're there. But since that's a little bit different from what we're doing right now, I did want to run that by you all, make sure you're all comfortable with that.
Everybody comfortable with that? Okay.
Okay, good deal. And I know Matt Schmitz was going to brief you all about the planning for the Fall Festival, I think they've come up with some really cool ideas. So I will let him over those with you. It's a little tough to follow, really cool ideas right off the bat. So, we've been talking about Fall Fest, and I've got Tim Dossis here with me as well, Tim. Kind of over to the side maybe there, yeah, so. We've got a couple ideas, we're concerned about social distancing in relation to Fall Fest and having it on the trail, since the trail's obviously only 10 feet wide. We're a little concerned about having stuff on both sides of the trail and being able to socially distance while we're out there. So what we've kind of been throwing around, and I've been talking with Christina from Parks Department and Jason as well, and Terry from the library and kind of trying to come up with some ideas, what we're thinking right now is about doing a, like a trunk or treat type event, like a drive-through event on the 24th, instead of doing Fall Fest, we would combine kind of what was our spooky center or would have been spooky center event with an outdoor trunk or treat where people drive by either in front of City Hall or out at Bernard Park. And we give them candy and stuff like that, and then give them the pumpkins that we would have given out at Fall Fest along with a crafting kit, and I think the library's got some other goodies to give away, and Parks Department's got some other stuff to give away as well. So that's kind of the direction that we want to head, but I wanted to find out what everybody's opinion was and, and see what you all thought about that first.
I think it's a good idea.
I second that.
Very good. Yes, you okay with that? Okay, Greg?
So.
Okay.
The only other thing real quick that I just, just in transparency is, we have spent to date $850, correct, on the Fall Fest? And that was for a deposit for some of the, the.
For caricature artists, staffing, to run a mini golf course, we were trying to do more socially distant type events anyways, not a traditional moonwalk or anything, but still, I think by the time you take out so many pieces of the Fall Fest.
Sure, but with that, we'll have to walk away from the $850, but that's, I don't, I, yeah.
That's the way, that's the way it goes.
Yep.
Yeah, that, that's just. Yep. I like your idea.
Okay. Thanks.
Alrighty.
So October 24th, right?
Yes, October 24th, and we'll get, we'll put that out on, once we get some logistics nailed down on that, we'll get it put out on social media and we'll make sure everybody knows, you know, when it's, what time of day it's going to be, because, I think Christina, when I was talking to her, wanted to do it later in the day, which I kind of agree with, doing it in the afternoon, maybe that type of timeline, so. We'll, we'll figure that out and we'll get it out to everybody, thank you.
Just to be clear, there won't be anything in Angel Falls Trail this year then, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
Thank you, Matt, Tim?
So you guys may have noticed, there's just a little bit of cleanup work going on around the intersection of DeSoto Road, and I think there's also a little bit of diamond grinding going on, we tried to put out a press release about that just so everybody knew. Other than that, that's all I have.
Before we get started, I had a, I had the opportunity to go to our revised fishing, okay, fishing day and Jenny, Jason, you and the staff, and I saw a bunch of you out there, folks, and volunteers out there, considering what we had to do, y'all did a really good job spacing and trying to do it and didn't see that we had as many suicide fish, but that might be because we were later in the season, but my just hats off to y'all, for y'all providing that, because that was, that was pretty, pretty good deal. So thank you, you'll pass that on to everybody, and we're going to start this evening with Trinkle.
Well, I've had, heard a lot of compliments that even though the fireworks was consolidated to the city, you know, proper, a lot of people like, was able to set it home on their back porch and watch it, that was, there was the aerials, I think the aerials they incorporated with the, you know, with a little, I think, on the ground, but everybody, probably more people got to see it in town than they would have at Bernard Park, I guess, maybe, maybe because they were looking for it, but, a lot of compliments positive about it. That's all I have.
Dave, you're absolutely right, I, I don't know how many times I got hit in the grocery store, people thanking us for doing that, and they were right, they were watching on the back porch. So I just think for us to be able to come up with an idea to do that was, was excellent, Gene?
Yeah, I, I'll jump on that one too, everybody I talked to was happy about it. One of the more common comments was that I got home a heck of a lot quicker than I have before. So, so there's that, and I, I want to talk a little bit about this care's money and, and what we've donated to the school district. Because it's my understanding, a lot of cities have not shared like we have. I've heard, I've heard phrases, a nice little donation, and I take exception to $400,000 being a nice little donation. And I think that, and I, I'm fine with doing it, not complaining about doing it, but, but I think we need to make people more aware that what we've done and what we've contributed to, to make the school situations as safe as possible for everybody. And so we did that, I know the school district got $430,000 from the county, so we basically almost doubled their money. And again, I think we, we need to let people know what we've done, as, as much as we can do to help out a kind of a bad awkward situation, so. And everybody wear a mask and get a flu shot, that's all I have.
Thank you, Gene, Jesse?
Yeah, I got the same feedback about the fireworks, a lot of people were, were excited that they were in town and that they could watch them from their houses. A number of people say we should leave them like that, I said, I doubt we'll do that, but I'll definitely mention it. And it was great, I was up at the bank on the corner in Lansing County Center, and it was, it was cool to see people hanging out, they were social distancing, they were being careful, so I mean, even though there was some large crowds, it was still a great scene, and it gave a, a sense of normalcy again, so it was a pretty awesome time. We've had a lot of compliments about that, and I just thank the city for doing that. You know, the, the COVID cases, you know, I'm going to talk about that for a second, you know, the cases are still, still going up. They're not going to go down, just face it, they're not going to go down, this is worldwide, it's like water, it's worldwide, it's not going to go down, they need to find a virus, a vaccine, and work on that, I, I am, I'm of the belief that I don't want to hang out in my house and be scared and be fearful of it, I know some people want to be, but I encourage people not to lock themselves down, to put on a mask, go out and. I know some people want to be, but I encourage people not to lock themselves down, to, to put on a mask, go out and get out in the public eye and go do things. Don't, don't be a hermit and lock yourself down unless you've got health issues, then you might want to. But I think we've got a long way to go with this, with this coronavirus before we come up with a cure. And I just hope that we come up with a cure faster than what I think's going to happen. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Jesse. Greg?
Yeah, I, uh, I too enjoyed the fireworks, it was, uh, enjoyable and, and I did receive some, also some good comments about that. And on this day in seventeen eighty seven, uh, one of the greatest documents that in my opinion has ever been written, the U.S. Constitution was signed in Philadelphia. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Gary. Tony?
Yeah, thanks, sir. Yeah, so I just want to say thanks to, uh, Mr. Stevenson for volunteering for the tree board. Love volunteers, appreciate it. And, uh, I, I'll also talk about the fireworks, I thought they were really good. I brought my granddaughters, we were down by the elementary school parking lot, but everybody had their cars out, put their tailgates down, little families with their. So there, there was good separation and I think everybody really enjoyed it, so. That was, I mean, that was pretty good work on behalf of the staff to shift that over and, and make that happen. So kudos to the staff for doing that, and I think the city appreciates everybody I talked to. I mean, I think that is all I have.
Thank you, Tony. Carrie?
It's an honorable job on the fireworks, I would agree. And my hats off to the staff for the work they did in managing that. Also, I will totally agree with Gene Kirby, the money the school district got from the city. You guys, that is huge for us to help protect our kids and get some of the things we need, uh, to keep not only our students safe, but our teachers safe also. And it's a, an incredible undertaking, but, uh, I know, working for the district, I greatly appreciate the money that the, that the city gave. We are also well, well aware that not every, um, city council was as generous as Lansing was.
Good. And. Carrie? Don, I saw you snuck in there, you're the last one.
Well, you heard about the Constitution.
I, uh, I apologize, I've been having, I had some computer problems here and couldn't get in till the very, very last minute. I don't have really anything to say.
Need a motion from you.
Oh, I moved to adjourn.
Second.
What we need you for, Don?
I know, for the little things.
We'd be here forever if it wasn't for you.
Yeah, right.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. McNeil?
Yes.
Mr. Braggart?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Thank you, folks, we are adjourned.
Night, y'all.
Have a good night, have a good weekend.